Okay, we're here tonight, June 16th, for the Town and Norfolk Planning Board meeting. It is 7:35, and our Chair, Steve, is out tonight, so I'll be filling in for Chair tonight.
Being videotaped.
We are being videotaped and audiotaped, so when you do speak, you're gonna have to use the microphone. That's for the viewers at home. You have to state your name, please. And with that, on our agenda tonight, we had Board Reorganization as our first item. We are going to move that to our next meeting. We also have a public hearing starting at 7:45, so we will wait until that posted time. It's going to be continued, but we have to wait till the posted time to continue it. We also have Fern Ridge Estates, but we're gonna hold off on that. We're gonna jump forward to Sandy Knoll Estates, if everybody is here from Sandy Knoll that needs to be here.
Hi.
Yeah, okay. So let's jump into that, then. There's a request to release lots 1 through 5, and we want to talk about the earth removal permit and the lender's agreement.
Hi, good evening. Louis Cacavero for the developer, if I may make use of just a corner of your table. So I've been working hard with Mr. Goff to try to assemble-- to try to assemble a document that defines all of our open issues, creates a timetable for completion of those open items that is both satisfactory to the Board as well as feasible and achievable by the developer. As you know, we have five lots, two of which require earth removal, but the developer is most interested in, as expeditiously as possible, commencing construction on the balance of this project, those five lots. And what we would like to do tonight is to present to you the agreement that Mr. Goff and I have been working on, present to you our proposed lender agreement, all combined with a request that you approve a previously assembled cost to complete, and vote, if possible, to release our lots from the planning board covenants. I thought I'd take maybe just a moment to refresh everybody and ask my client to show his plan and identify the lots that require earth removal, the lots that don't. And he can also address some of the efforts he's undertaken over the last weeks and months to address some of the immediate concerns that we heard about at our last presentation.
My name is Michael Donapley. I'm President of Maple Sands Corporation. And the lots that need the earth removal, lots 2 and 3, and we're trying to seek building permits for lot 4 and 1 right now. And we're gonna have to go through the earth removal process, which we would do within 60 days, you know, file it and file for building permits and an earth removal permit. And, you know, we're looking for the Board tonight to accept the bond figure that we worked out together with, and Bray and Lou did an agreement or something that the town has agreed to, I guess, or you're gonna agree to it. And we just want to know, you know, where we stand with it, and we want to move ahead with this. I'm sure you guys do, too.
We kind of have to just identify some of the most recent efforts to address silt removal.
Yeah, well, we had a little silt washout. It was washing down a little valley right down through here, and it was going up over the sidewalk that we've already put in. We completed the sidewalk up to about here, up to about Lot 3. And it was going down there. So what I did is I dug a little hole beyond these basins, and so the water goes into a hole, and then we ran that sock all the way down the sidewalk and made a loop back into the lot. So as of this last rainstorm, there was no silt on the road. And I don't know if anybody's been down there or Ray's been down there, but Ray inspected the silt fence and seems to be working. We staked it and everything, so that's what we got.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm not sure, have you circulated the proposed agreement?
I thought you were going to circulate it tonight.
Okay.
But I did not, because I thought that we talked about making some changes or a couple of things you had discussed amending, so. Thank you.
Yep. So we're claiming, which lots do not need earth removal at all?
Lots 5, which is out of this thing. It's almost up on the Franklin side. We'll be--
So that's out of this picture?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Does not need it.
And 1 doesn't need earth removal.
So it'll be no future requests for earth removal from those? You're gonna stick to the maximum allowed by the building--
Yeah, we've already graded lots during that agreement we had a year ago, last October.
Okay, so it's a middle two?
Yeah, it's a middle two, 2 and 3.
Okay, thank you.
So for purposes of trying to, once again, create an outline that addresses your concerns and what's feasible and achievable for us. I drafted this agreement some months ago. Mr. Goff and I have been working to refine it, and I think, I don't want to speak for him. I'll let him certainly speak for himself, but I think we've reached a point where the agreement addresses a timetable and a sequencing of events that should be satisfactory to the Board. And in essence, what the agreement says is, we've supplied you with a proposed lender's agreement and a cost to complete that was done by your consulting engineer. We'd like and ask that you endorse and approve that. Coupled with that, we'd ask that that be substituted for the covenant and that lot releases issue. And that would pave the way for us to begin to apply for building permits with the building commissioner, because that's a prerequisite to us being able to apply for building permits. And as a footnote, we know we have some Concom things to address that need to be addressed before we can get building permits as well. Secondly, the agreement goes on to say that we would like to assure you, and I've left the number blank for the moment in Paragraph 1, but I think we'd like to insert 60 days. Within 60 days, we would apply, properly apply for earth removal permits before you. A public hearing would have to be advertised and noticed. We'd come back, and we'd make our presentation with all the appropriate due diligence in hand for earth removal permits for the two lots in the middle that require earth removal in excess of that allowed by the regs as a matter of right. And I know that you're gonna want to see engineering data that describes cut-and-fill numbers. You're gonna want to see all of the things that the regulations require in terms of backup data, and we'll supply that at the time of the public hearing. And in exchange for these covenants and agreements, we're hopeful that we can at least get past the lot release portion of this exercise and put in place the lender's agreement. So maybe Mr. Goff might have comments for you before we take questions from the Board.
I really have no comments. I, you know, I wanted you to make your presentation. I think the presentation, unfortunately, is everyone's memory is probably a little bit less sharp than it was three months ago when you were here. So I think it takes a little bit of time to ramp up and remember what exactly was going on with this development. But essentially, you have three lots that you can get a building permit for. We have two that need an earth removal permit. You know, the timing of that is really what was critical in this whole thing. And I know that some of the neighbors are anxious to see this development either get underway or move towards completion. And I think that's what our goal is here tonight, is to move towards completion, have a timeline for what's going to happen and when it's gonna happen, where it's gonna happen. And, you know, I think it's important that we keep in mind those things as this project moves forward. I did review with you. I did make some comments. Nothing that I saw substantial that changed anything in here. So I think we've got a pretty good agreement moving forward. The only thing that I think-- I actually sat with John today later this afternoon, and him and I looked it over. And I believe it was number 6 we had a question about in the agreement, and it says, "Upon satisfactory review and acceptance of the removal of operations described herein, the Board shall not interfere with or cause building permit applications for construction on the lots to not issue so long as developer remains in full compliance with its approvals and covenants with the Board." I read that as to say that the planning Board will not stop any building permits from being issued anywhere in the development. I think one of the things that's missing in there, and I think that's, I think what you meant to say, is the lots that have, don't require an earth removal permit. And I think that's what you were trying to say there. I'm not sure it completely says that. It could be construed to say that even the ones with, that require an earth removal permit will require-- the planning Board can't stop you from building on that. I think we need to clarify that, just to make sure that it says what it's supposed to say.
Okay, that's a new comment. That's not something you gave to me last Friday.
No, this is just, John and I were sitting and looking at this and--
Kind of interesting, Lou, because when you look at this, yeah, it does say that you could get building permits on all five lots without earth removal permits, et cetera, et cetera. And it sort of selfcontrols itself. Technically, you can. But if you get a building permit on one of those lots with the earth, you forego your right to remove any earth, and you're building a house that's gonna be way up in the sky. So that right almost controls itself. But I think, just to make this more clear for the Board and the neighbors, if we quantify the lots that-- because you're saying upon review and acceptance, not completion, review and acceptance. So upon review and acceptance, you can start and get the building permits on the lot where earth is not coming off of. On the lots where earth is coming off of, you should be getting the earth removal permits before you get the-- and I think that's what you want. And like I said, it sort of self-contains itself. But I think if we were more explicit, that would stop you from getting a building permit on the lot with a lot of earth, and then halfway down the road, applying for an earth removal permit and causing a little bit of chaos.
Well, I think the intent of the paragraph, because I drafted it, was we apply for an earth removal permit. You give us one with perhaps conditions or requirements. We comply. We do the earth removal. You come out and inspect the earth removal and say, "Your work is satisfactory."
Okay.
The intent of this paragraph is for, at that point, there to be an agreement that there's no planning board impediments to the issuance of a building permit for that lot in question at that point in time.
So we're all still talking about Paragraph 6 here in this conversation?
Yeah. So that was the intent of--
I think if you just quantify that and be more specific, I think that it works. And that's apparently from Mike's response. That's exactly what you intend to do.
Right. I don't think we'd get a building in any way with the way it is. You couldn't build a house there anyway. So you'd have to move the earth before you build a house.
Yeah, so if we just quantify what-- is there actually a known? That would help her down the road.
All right, so we'll revise 6 to more accurately reflect that sequence.
Okay.
And as it relates to lots 2 and 3.
Yes.
Any thoughts about the 60-day timeframe? I know that that was a hot-button topic for the Board before, that you wanted this started and completed. So I've built in timetables for the work to be done once we start the process.
Yeah.
Are 60 days satisfactory to the Board?
To start.
We would apply for the earth removal permits?
It's not in there yet.
In Paragraph 2, the main thing is, I think everybody's looking for--
He's gonna put it in here, 60 days.
Within 75 days of the signing of this agreement, you're gonna have the dirt removed in full.
Within 75 days of the issuance of the permit? Because it may take you some time to issue the permit.
Correct, yeah, understandable. So once they get the permit in 75 days, and they're gonna give us, right, where it's going, who's gonna be trucking it, you don't have to really quantify the number of trucks and trips per day, because you've set a deadline date-wise that you have to comply with. And also in here, it accounts-- so the folks know it accounts for interim monitoring to make sure that the whole process is on site, on schedule, I should say, so.
And the only contingency, of course, would, you know, and I've built it in here, is weather and unforeseen exigencies. Well, certainly in the summer, but one never knows.
You said 75 days of getting the permit?
Correct.
After getting the permit.
But in Paragraph 2, it doesn't say that. It says 75 days following effective date of this agreement, which ties your hand.
Yeah, I meant to say issuance of permit.
Right, okay.
And then, if that doesn't happen and there's no unforeseen conditions, then the security that's gonna be posted is our assurance.
And I did put Paragraph 8 in that says, if in your collective judgment you want to impose a security obligation on us at the time you issue the building, the earth removal permit, my expectation is that you'll do that. And my expectation is further, unfortunately, that we'd forfeit that security if we don't comply with these terms.
So how do we go about determining what that amount should be?
I'm not sure, Michelle, but I think the only thing we really can do is bond him to relume and seed and regrade. Is that correct?
Yes.
We can't bond him to have us remove it. We can't touch his land. But I think we can bond him to grade it, lume and seed, and put it back in a natural state.
Yeah, okay, makes sense, makes sense.
I'm guessing, but I don't know if we have any more jurisdiction than that.
I believe we'd call on the DPW Director to give us an estimate to lume and seed.
So should we set that? That value should probably be set as part of this agreement, right?
Yes.
Oh, I think that would be part of the earth removal public hearing, wouldn't it? We'd talk about that number at the time we have our public hearing.
Yep.
And then there'll be a lot more information to make that decision on.
And we can, and hopefully, we become armed with that information. So we have a readily available number. Bet it and make sure you're satisfied with it before we ever get in front of you for the public hearing.
Sure.
So does this entire agreement get reviewed at the public hearing? Get formally sort of accepted, or?
That's a good question, actually. I would say we probably sign that at the public hearing. Because it really doesn't matter if we don't give them a permit. From what I understand, as I talked to Lou, I don't think we have any jurisdiction to stop him from bonding the road and releasing lots. I don't see anywhere in our regulations-- Gina, you can correct me if I'm wrong-- where if you have it to base grade with the drainage working and a bond set to go. I don't think we can stop-- we can't stop and not release lots. I also don't believe that we can stop issuing building permits as a second step. I think where it comes in with our jurisdiction is if he wants to remove earth on some of those, then we can require the earth removal permit through this agreement.
Just a point of clarification. the agreement, and obviously I don't have it, so, you know, just what I'm hearing, is it's, it has to be codified in order for the 60 days to start the earth removal.
Right.
So couldn't you add language? Can't you sign a conceptual document now that gets refined in the earth removal process so that you can at least start the process?
That was my hope, actually. Thank you for the question.
Yeah, it's, I mean, you don't have the surety, but you can say that the amount will be determined at the public hearing.
That's exactly what Paragraph 8 says, in fact.
Okay.
To move on this--
So that you can start the time clock.
Well, that would suggest, then, that we ask the gentleman to go off and reword Paragraph 6--
And 2.
--this Paragraph 8. And then we'll do some other business, and you come back, and we'll keep going. That's what it suggests to me.
Actually, Paragraph 2 needs--
You comfortable with that?
Some modification, too, to talk about the permit date.
Yeah.
And Paragraph 2, we have that other change as well.
Paragraph 2, 60 days.
Paragraph 1 would have 60 days. Paragraph 2 would be corrected to read from issuance of permit.
Right.
Paragraph 6, you want some clarity.
Yeah, which we agreed to a minute ago. Lot numbers, yeah.
That's gonna be in.
Okay, I'll do that. You'll call us again. Second call, as they say in my business.
Do you, do you need some language around the surety agreement? That the dollar value will--
Yes, yes.
It says right now, "To secure its performance of the earth removal operations described herein in a timely manner, the developer shall post security in the amount to be reasonably determined by the Board, which shall be released upon timely and satisfactory performance hereunder." So I think that says it, okay.
Okay, I'll go work those three paragraphs up, and I'll come back and give that to you, nut.
And then meanwhile, we'll want to get in touch with you to set the public hearing.
Yeah, we'll apply within the 60 days.
So are you okay with that, Madam Chairman, to bring it back later in the evening?
We're gonna have it ready tonight?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't understand.
Interlineations. If you're okay with that, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Sort of an internal document, anyway.
You're okay with it?
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
You're okay with it? Okey-dokey.
Moving along.
All right, let's get on with Fern Ridge Estates.
He's not here.
Uh, he's here.
Oh, he's here, he is here, yeah.
You want to leave that item open on the agenda?
Yep.
Okay.
We're gonna come back to it. I don't think we need to do-- it's not a public hearing. We don't have to take any votes or anything.
No.
What about the public hearing we have just now?
Oh, yeah, 7:45. Oh, good point, thank you. 5 Phillips Way, we're gonna open it and then continue it. But before we continue it, I guess, let's talk about our next meeting date, since we have to continue it to then. Betsy has some dates down on the agenda. The next one would be-- did they want it in July at the next one?
Yeah, yep.
Potentially.
July 14.
I think we already had it on our calendars. I think we'd already put that in, Betsy.
I don't think we had, but I--
I have it on mine.
That's a Tuesday. I can do that if that's agreeable with everybody else. It's on our agenda, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying.
Does it work?
I've got it on my calendar. I'm good for that.
And I, since I have it already on my calendar, I think we may have talked about it, so I'm hoping that Steve and Jeff, therefore, are available. Okay. So can you please open the hearing, and then we'll continue it? Don't we, don't we have to do that? Or do we just, do we have to open it? Betsy, do we have to?
It's just a continuation from last time.
Oh, it's already-- I thought we opened it last time? Oh, I didn't realize.
So what time on July?
7:45 ago?
Motion to continue the public hearing for 5 Phillips Way to 7:45 on July 14.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
So the folks from Sandy Knoll will be coming back looking to get the covenant signed?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And this is the cost to complete in front of us?
That's the cost to complete, yeah.
Can I ask, Bob, maybe just a quick question?
Sure.
Well, this is a year old. They have a tonnage dollar amount here of $130 a ton. Is that still a market price? Do you know? Right, this is a cost to complete for sandy acres that was done a year ago?
For sidewalks or streets?
For streets.
$130 is a good price for--
All right, so this, right, my question was, does this have to be updated? Because it's a year old. But if the main number here is that current, then it should be okay?
For that, for that amount, for that task.
Correct, yeah, okay, that's all I wanted.
Let's try and squeeze for a minute before we get them back.
Betsy, I got an email from you just recently, today or yesterday, with a letter from Mr. Petrosi. But I don't see it in the package here.
Yeah, it's not, does it look like it is?
Um, no, I may have forgot to include it, so.
Okay. I read it, but I don't remember all the points.
No, me neither. I'm sure it's gonna be contentious, so I don't see it.
We should address each one of the items.
Yeah, Bumble, Pumas, too.
Yes.
This really ain't our plans, okay? Is that my stuff? This one's so good, it's really-- It has to be corrected, right?
I spoke to him tonight.
Did you?
Yeah, he's just there in the weather.
For Crowley. He's an amazing guy, and he can do what he does.
I know.
Yeah, but it's not his night, but he's been ridiculous, he's strong.
Yes.
Expect that of me.
I know.
Well, let's hope you're not facing the same situation.
Right. Did you guys do the elections offices?
No, because the Board isn't complete, we've gotta--
Mr. Jaffray, Mrs. Steve.
Steve would like you to do it without him.
It's not his night.
It's not on the agenda, but my term is up June 30, and I'm not gonna ask to be reappointed. I do have, I spoke to someone on the train a few years ago. I'm gonna see if he's still interested. So maybe I can bring you a warm body.
You sure?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Bums me half.
It's just not the same. Maybe somebody'll run for election again.
Why not?
Yeah. I'm just not gonna do associate.
Nope.
I understand.
That's, that's awkward, because I don't know anybody that would jump from the audience here. I don't know how anybody would come for the night and jump back and forth. I can't see that.
I'm not sure, I don't follow any.
He's saying he doesn't understand.
Well, what the law was told to us. A special permit here, other than that, you're in the audience.
Yeah.
I don't feel like anybody would do that.
I've seen him speak about it, and he's done some research. That is not a--
Yeah.
It's not a, it's not a black and white[1624.62]
It's not a, it's not, uh, a black and white, um, description of the law. It's an interpretation, so he wants to have that conversation, um, to find out how much latitude there is in that interpretation, because it's-
I can only tell you how COMCOM works. We even associate a member six of the table and responds to questions asked by the chairman.
Well, I mean, you can look at quite a few videos, and you'll see the planning board has always done that as well. The diff, the difference is, I'm a past planning board member. I think it's interesting. So while we're waiting for that letter, should, is there anything quickly that we can do? We have a couple of, few milars, four A and Rs, or three A and Rs that we just need to review and sign, could we do any of those quickly?
Sure.
Is the TOILs in straightforward?
I think the TOIL's, um, is just modification.
Yeah, that wasn't an A and R, right, that was?
That was not-
That was on the A and R, yeah, let's jump ahead to thirty-five Rockwood then. That came with a... Thank you.
Thank you, sure.
And that did come with a review from Gino?
Yes, and I had a number of comments on technical deficiencies that met the substantive requirements, and they have, I just checked it now, they did, they did make all the corrections in my, in my letter.
Okay.
Do we have the plan?
So that's in our packet, Gino's review is in our packet, dated June ninth.
Should that be updated plan? Yes, with all your corrections.
Yep, okay, I see it.
So he had about eight comments, but he's saying they've all been-
Addressed.
Addressed. So anybody have any questions on these?
No. I've read, uh, Gino's comments.
I did as well.
So are we ready to sign the milar?
I think we have to vote on the decision first, on the review, and then vote to sign it.
You want me to make the motion?
Sure.
Motion to approve the A and R plan for thirty-five Rockwood Road and sign the milar plans?
When I give them, it's dated, um, should be-
Here it is, right here. Dated March twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen. Yep.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll get that one signed. Do we just sign the milar, Betsy, or all the bond prints, too?
And we'll keep the sign, and the paper copies, too.
These here?
This one's going the same direction as yours, this one needs to be flipped.
Want to get this done now?
Mm-hmm. Oh, they could be signed real quick. We should probably have some copies to look at, Betsy. John, I think you missed one there. Oh, Bob, we did, too.
I too. Can't win, you will lose in a much play. Yep.
Thank you.
I'll sign.
Yeah.
See, yours is better than mine, with glasses on top of it.
I just saw you pick up two sheets of paper.
Okay, I took care of that one. All right.
So it looks like in a minute, we're gonna have both documents copied, well, maybe we'll get back to the, um,
Right.
Sandy Knoll?
Yeah, finish that off.
Betsy's gonna be done in just a minute, we'll finish that off, and then we'll go on to Fern Ridge.
Yeah, okay.
And Betsy, you know that we're not gonna do the Turner Street Greaves A and R because, um, John has to recuse himself? They're a client of his, so it leaves only two of us.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, I know that they're anxious, but- Are they here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bob, what our chairman has just said is, we only have three members, and since I'm your CPA, I have to recuse myself and cannot, uh, endorse the plan, and we need three votes to endorse the plan, although we were set to, we had two members, uh, that couldn't make it tonight, so they don't have a quorum to sign it.
So we have to continue it, until we- Our next meeting is not until July fourteenth. We don't have a quorum. It's just town laws.
State law.
State laws.
Exactly. He could do constructive approval. Has it been filed with the town? But let's see, today's the sixteenth. Well, he wouldn't save that much time, but if he filed it with town clerk tomorrow, in twenty-one days, she could certify that you hadn't signed it. So that would be the best, the best that could happen, is, but that would only save a few days.
You can't even discuss it, I mean, it's all-
Well, it doesn't matter if we discuss it, it doesn't, you can't take the vote without the quorum, so we could discuss it all we want, but it won't really matter unless we have a-
We need three signatures on the plan, so we've only got two.
Sorry. Have you already done your review?
Yes. Well, is there any problem with the signing if we had a third member? Is it all set to be, are there already-
As far as I'm concerned, yes.
You're right.
I have no problem with that.
So I guess what they're saying is, technically can be signed if we had a quorum, there's no, no, no other issues with it, if that helps. Can we, can, uh, can we sign tonight and, and ask one of our missing members to sign it?
They have to be here to vote.
They have to be here to vote, yeah, okay.
The only way we could do it is if we held another meeting, when everyone could be here.
Understood. Try and, try and.
Well, today's the sixteenth, it's thirty days. You, you could save nine days if you, if you filed it with, or eight days if you signed, filed it with town clerk tomorrow.
Oh, boy.
Okay.
Sorry. Lost a customer. Angry customer. Okay, we're gonna jump back to Sandy Knoll and try and kick this out, um, so we can move on to our other agenda items. So I think in front of us, we have a modified draft agreement. And if you don't mind just walking us through the changes real quickly?
Certainly, so in paragraph one, I identified, um, the sixty day commitment that we would file our proper complete applications for- For the two affected lots within sixty days of the date of this agreement.
Mind if I interrupt for a sec?
I don't.
Thank you. Do you have any assurance that next month, there'll be enough people here?
Well, tonight was a surprise, we have a member who is sick, so you know, life happens sometimes, we apologize, it's a little bit out of our control, so of course, we try and have a quorum every meeting, that's our goal.
Can we get the signatures that are here today in case something else-
We're not allowed to vote on a signature without a quorum. It's against the law, I'm sorry, guys.
Uh, in paragraph one, I identified our sixty day commitment to, to file proper complete applications for earth removal permits, uh, within sixty days of the date of this agreement. I also identified the two affected lots, lots two and B, on the subdivision plan. I corrected Mr. Byron's suggestion, um, the language in paragraph two, that indicates that the earth removal work will be complete within seventy-five days of the permits issuance. And you can actually embody that as a condition on the earth removal permit itself, if you choose to at the time. And I tried to more accurately state my, uh, intentions in paragraph six at Mr. Whittleton's request, which is, after issuance of the earth removal permits on lots two B and three B, in satisfactory performance under those permits, there'll be no further impediments to the issuance of building permits for those lots, and the planning board will be satisfied, uh, at that juncture. So I identified the lot numbers, John, as well as, uh, made the language a little bit cleaner for you. So I'll reiterate my requests that, uh, we adopt this agreement, both my client, as well as the board, as a roadmap for going forward. Uh, and I'd, I'd couple that with a request that you accept the previously presented lender's agreement and cost of complete.
So where did you get that copy of the cost to complete? Oh, so we don't have that in front of us tonight as a board, I know we've seen it in the past.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause-
Um, it's there.
The cost to complete?
It's right there.
Attached to the lender's agreement, I take the last page.
I asked Bob about the most significant number-
Yeah, I heard you do that, right.
Which means, one year, everything else should be pretty much-
Yeah.
Okay, he's done some things since this anyway, so I think right-
We're safe, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'm agreeing. Okay.
No, it's okay.
So you want to make the motion, John, to? I think first we, Gino, don't we first make the motion to accept the cost of complete for the, uh, roadway?
Yes.
All right. This is the one time, the cost of complete has no actual stations for the roadway. Yeah, there's, there's no stations for the roadway here, you know, signifying where this is, right above, so ac, actually, this is the total length of Silver Fox Road in Norfolk, correct?
Yes.
There's no station numbers on this cost of complete, that's what I was gonna-
There's no station numbers on the bond for you? I don't have it on yet.
Uh, no, no, there's not. Normally, Tom Houston used to put them up at the top there, but I don't see them, so I think all I have to say is, uh, to accept this for the roadway on Silver Fox Road in Norfolk, the rest of it is Franklin, I think that would suffice. Do you know approximately how long the roadway is in Norfolk?
I think it's a hundred feet or something, isn't it?
I think we're-
No stations on this, either.
That's what I'm gonna say.
I think so, too, I'd rather say Norfolk.
I would, I guess so, no more.
Rather than get some over here.
Ray's gonna-
Make a motion to accept the cost of complete, uh, from Maple Sands Corporation for Silver Fox Road, the whole section of that in the town of Norfolk, in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand dollars even.
Second?
All those in favor? Aye.
What was that bond amount, John?
Two-ten.
Even.
It's going from-
Twenty-two?
Yeah, but it's not twenty-two, what they're doing is, uh, they're going from the other direction, so it's twenty-two to-
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, so it's a thousand feet.
Okay.
And then-
Approve the covenant for the recent lots. Yeah, that's the next thing, isn't it? Yes.
Do we do that, or do we wait?
We have to do this weekend, stop doing this based on that.
Okay.
So if you're okay.
Yep.
All right, I will, uh, make a motion to endorse the covenants, uh, secured by a performance bond for lots number four eighty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, four eighty-eight, and four seventy-six, being Norfolk Registry District Plan Number six-six-one-six-dash-one by GLM Engineering Consultants, May twenty-fourth, two thousand and seven.
Second?
All those in favor? Discussion, questions?
That's all five lots?
Yes.
Even the two that have earth removal?
That's the order we have to do it. That's what I think we revised, right?
That's right.
Just questioning it.
Any other questions? Discussion, did you second it?
I did.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then do we need to formally vote anything on-
I think we do, yeah.
This, even though it's a draft agreement?
I don't think so, no.
I mean, I think through our, through our, well, we don't want to vote on this until we have the public hearing, I think, in terms, terms of memorializing it, but we do want to, at least through our discussion, agree that this is the roadmap.
I think we need to agree.
I think this is- An agreement that we were hoping to endorse with you tonight.
I would agree with that sentiment, that you should, you should vote on this agreement tonight.
You should vote on this tonight. As a draft, yeah.
As a draft. It's an enforceable draft, it has a sixty day lot starting.
Yeah, and that's exactly why you want to do that, is to start that clock.
Okay.
I move to endorse the agreement made the sixteenth day of June in two thousand and fifteen between the town of Norfolk, acting by and through its planning board, hereon after the board, and Maple Sands Corporation of forty-five Silver Fox Road, Franklin, Mass, hereon after the developer. As a draft, should be completed at the earth removal public hearing.
I think you want this to be an agreement between us now, because this binds us to come back to you within sixty days with all the earth removal stuff that you want us to file.
You might reopen it after hearing.
That's the only, the only real binding obligation on this, under this agreement going forward for the next sixty days is on us.
Right.
Yeah, the hearing would be on the actual permit.
Yeah, so, so, uh, strike the words as a draft.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
No.
Want to second this?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I think that completes it.
So we need one, one copy to sign, right?
Sign two for you?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll sign two, because we'll do one for him and one for us.
All right, you're gonna circulate one and-
Yeah, this is the covenant for the lot release?
Yep.
You're starting two up there, are they? Okay, they're starting them.
So Mike, in a hundred and thirty-five days, this, this earth is gone and done with, correct?
We have to provide you approval.
You're not, you're not coming back.
It's not if, it's when.
Okay, so this is the covenant on the lot releases?
Thank you. You guys want to sign that?
Okay.
We need to sign two copies, right?
Yeah, he's-
He's got-
He's got one, two.
I'll have the lender's agreement, so we-
We're signing now, if you want to take a minute.
Yeah, you'll need the originals, so. Okay, sounds good, I'll be in touch tomorrow.
We ready to move on?
Usually pretty standard.
Yeah, it's ready.
Good question, yeah, you just need to grab a microphone.
Yeah, you could.
The one up there?
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
I would just have a question to ask, how was noise complaint, which was filed by David Scandal?
It's a break.
I think it was two Fridays ago.
I don't know, anything about it?
I, I did go out, I had heard about that, um, they were, they were moving some materials, I, I asked them to stop, and they did. And, and, you know, I think they were trying to get ready for this, but I, you know, trying to move forward, I think that was the, the real issue, is, is, you know, I, I think they were trying to move forward with the, with the idea that they could, um-
Seems to me the issue was, they came in here last time with this plan, and then they're out there with heavy machinery, you know, removing earth.
Understood, understood.
You know, on, if, and the piles, it's their earth, piles a lot smaller than it was when they were in here, and that's just an observation.
Understood.
It's finished, but they're not, they're not here to left, but they're not buying by anything whatsoever that they come in here and say they're gonna do, or they say they're not gonna do something, so. Just take it for what it's worth, because I just anticipate a lot's out there.
Okay.
They're not people, they weren't, I just seen it, the neighbors have children, so it's not just me.
Sure.
They have five day old newborn in the house, they don't, these guys are up there with excavators and bulldozers and just dump trucks and the tailgate sand, and it just goes on and on and on.
We're trying to move this forward, though, I, I think that's what the goal of this here is, to make this problem go away.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to Fern Ridge Estates. So I know that we had a letter from Lou, but I think we wanted to also hear from Bob.
I think we want to hear from Bob first.
Yeah, I agree.
I think Bob wanted to, to get on the agenda, he's been, uh, looking to talk with the planning board about some of the issues he has with what's going on there. I've met with Lou on site, I've talked with him, um, he's put together, uh, some issues that he'd like to speak to the planning board about. Hopefully, we can, uh, move this forward, um, get some resolution on some of these things. Lou has also told me that he's working on getting, and I'm not gonna put words in his mouth, but he's working on getting a interim as-built done, so that we know what's on the ground and if it's in the right place, and what exactly is there. So I anticipate that, as a result of this meeting, we'll continue this discussion to the July meeting, and where we could probably see the interim as-built, if, if that works with his schedule, I don't know what his, his engineers told him, but just throw that on the table for now.
All righty, so Bob?
Am I away from here, or would you prefer I?
Oh, you can sit, or if we had an extra seat, you could come up, but-
I, um, I guess, just for a minute, if you don't mind, I, I guess I'd just like that, did you-
Can you just go through it again?
Well, I made a recommendation on the sixth, that I know that you got late, and then I made a recommendation on June first, the one that, on June first, did you receive that? Did that go along alright?
Yeah, yeah, that's the slur, you guys should have this.
Is that sent our last meeting?
Yes.
I don't remember seeing it.
You guys should have that.
Oh, in our packet. Yeah, I don't think we have it.
We don't have any packets.
You don't?
Nope.
Did they get it electronically?
I don't remember seeing it. All I remember seeing is the letter at our last meeting.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, I thought you sent that out to everybody, that one.
Maybe, I may have.
Well, why don't you do, it looks pretty short, why don't you review it with us?
Well, sometime back on May sixth, I made a recommendation with regards to Fernridge, and I put two options with the recommendation, I was kinda hoping that you'd see it, and the first one was to, it was just a recommendation for the board to vote to confiscate funds to pay for snow plowing, at the time. Snow plowing hasn't been paid for, well, it wasn't paid for in two thousand twelve, thirteen, snow season with this subdivision, until we received some payment when the developer needed something, months later, six, seven months later. Then the same thing occurred in the next year, we sand and we plow, we overspend our budget, and we receive no payment until the developer needs something, and then he agrees to do it, to pay for it. Again, in two thousand and fifteen, he owes us a sum of six thousand, sixty-two hundred dollars for snow plowing and sanding, but a lot of that money goes back to fourteen and fifteen, and here we are in another fiscal year, looking for that money, so I was asked, you know, with that, that the board vote to confiscate the bond, the maintenance, there is no maintenance bond itemized in the cost of complete, and if that is the case, that what we do is we, within our rights in the order of conditions, calculate in the maintenance bond, if we can't confiscate it just from the cost of complete bond in general. I was hoping that the developer would just pay it, and then we could go on, because then shortly thereafter, I was asked, after three years of a lull, in the, this is two thousand and twelve, when I've done my last inspection, to go out and inspect an installation for a water main and water service line, from the main to the curb stop, I guess, and then from the curb stop to the house, and then shortly thereafter, to inspect the sidewalk that was going in, they put down gravel, and then they blinded the sidewalk, and I said, I'm not going to do that inspection until we catch up to what we owe, and I asked the board if we could confiscate the funds to do that, because he's unwilling to pay, and as he'll tell you, when it's his turn to speak, that he will refuse to pay that.
That's the inspection fee, Bob?
Right.
What's the exact, about six thousand?
At this time, since the two thousand and thirteen, fourteen season, it's six thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-six cents.
That's the inspection fee amount?
No, that's a snowplow that he should've paid.
What's the inspection fee amount?
I'm sorry.
That's not in question.
Okay.
But I will tell you, I've got it here, Walter, if you wanted...
Sixty-two eighty-six, fifty.
Sixty-two eighty-six, fifty-six.
Fifty-six, all right, yep.
That being said, and after consulting with Ray, maybe it's that we didn't put the maintenance bond in, so maybe it's unlawful to just attach the bond, I just can't seem to work out with the contractor to pay for it. So what I did was, I made a recommendation, June first, dated June first, made it before that, but I think the meeting with, the last meeting was on June first, is today, June first?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Okay, I'm sorry, the last meeting I meant. So anyways, I made a recommendation that, at this point, I asked the board to vote to have a consulting firm inspect the subdivision at this point. Just to rewind just a little bit, I have done my inspections in the Fernridge subdivision, the last report was, I've done a couple of them, and the last report was done in two thousand and twelve. Typically, what you have and happens in a subdivision, as you know, is that the bulk of the infrastructure is in place, the homeowner goes on to build his houses, and there's a lull of a bit. What I do at that point is, I just go through once in a while to see if maintenance and upkeep of what is in place is being maintenance and upkept, and I'm pretty certain that that just hasn't been the case. I know for a fact that there's been more shelters that have gone down on multiple occasions on the Winston Road, because there was a slight incline, where I've asked the developer to clean up, he hasn't, we've gone out with our sweepers, because we just, I made a decision that we owe it to the, to the taxpayers that live on the accepted portion of it, to do something. There are other things that I've noticed, just driving through the subdivision, that haven't been upkept, I don't, I couldn't tell you the condition of the retention area, I know that, for instance, there is a catch basin that's caved in around, three years ago, I asked the developer to fix it, it's still in that condition. You're supposed to keep up and protect your investment, that will eventually be our ownership, and for that reason, I'm certain that it hasn't. So at this point, I've made a recommendation to have a consultant firm, not me, because we're just not, nothing's happening between the developer and I, it's just until he needs something, do we follow the rules, in my opinion. So I'm asking that the, the board vote to have a consultant firm, whoever your consultant, your choice is, to inspect the subdivision, provide the board with an existing conditions report. That means go out there, take a look at where everything is, it usually starts with an interim as-built, so as Ray mentioned, probably the good first line of business is to do that. But beyond that, and look at the drawing, and look at what's on the proposed drawing, someone needs to go out there and, and look at the condition, look down these catch basins, flush it, see if that retention area is where it's supposed to be. I know that I've gone out there a couple of times, and I've seen after heavy storms, ravening and stuff like that, so I don't know if the soils from the top went to the bottom, the condition of it. There is, I know that the developer put in a sidewalk on Spencer Lane, and asked for a inspection, which I went out there and, and I looked at, it was just a binder course, but later that day, put in a Cape Cod berm, which I was unaware of, and that was later told that he was unaware of, that we're looking for a Cape Cod monolithic application. Nonetheless, it's a small investment to take it out and put it in at the top. In the overall picture, if we do the monolithic berm like we intend to do, it would, it would be a savings to the developer, but that just doesn't seem to matter. So the other thing is, number two, is I asked for an updated, to update and come, a cost of complete bond. So have your consultant, if you would, go up, take the existing bond, cost of complete, and update it, it's been three years, and I know that I had, that bond that I had authored there, was probably missed a couple of things, and at the same time, when we asked the consultant to update the bond, could he add a maintenance portion to this bond, which is well within our rights stated in the cost of, the order of conditions, and at that point, if he hasn't paid his bill, we just get his bond, and there's no threat that we're doing anything illegal.
Do we have a copy of the current cost of completion bond?
I don't have it with me, I don't know, Ray, if you might have it.
I do have it. All right, so just looking at a snapshot of the first line I asked, on the last, how many feet of roadway in this subdivision?
I wish I had that in front of me, I'm thinking eighteen hundred feet on, or instead it may be a total of eighteen, I'm not sure.
All right, so we have, we have here five hundred and eighty tons of, uh, top coat asphalt, at seventy-five dollars a ton, and you had just mentioned that the cost of that is about one-thirty a ton, so this number here, if what you say is true, the number of forty-three thousand five for the top coat, really is in more of the range of seventy, seventy thousand or so. So this thing here really needs an update, because...
That, that cost is, maybe the developer could buy it at seventy-five dollars a ton, I know, John, for instance, I pay seventy dollars, but when you're doing a cost of complete, you don't know these things, you use conservative figures like one hundred and thirty dollars a ton.
Yep.
I don't think there's a line in there for, I believe there's a trail that was, that's a part of the plan, it's been so long that I'm, sorry, I, I can't, for most of the subdivision that I'm currently involved with, I could just shoot from the hip, but it's been a while since I've looked at the details of the drawing, because it has been three years.
Well, if this, if, if there was an interim as-built done, it wouldn't be a duplication of any effort, because that's moved towards the final as-built, which is just added on to, and that would give us an idea of exactly what's left to be done, and update the cost, whether they'd be higher or lower.
More specifically, I can tell you this, that I did inspect the subdivision, to the point where it's at now, and even if there was not an interim as-built, I think that there should be, there wasn't, I'm confident that that subdivision is where it belongs. I mean, when you're talking perfection of a, a set of drawings, and then you get down to asphalt, we're talking like, this is acceptable, like, for instance, there's a sidewalk in place, there's a sidewalk that goes through some utilities, I don't know if it's electricity or Verizon, for instance, but it doesn't show that on the drawings, and we wouldn't accept that kind of obstruction in our sidewalk. So these are little things, I think the report, the conditions report is more important than the interim as-built, but I'm recommending both, for sure.
What vehicles do we have, if any, to take care of this snow plowing money, to recoup it?
My reading of, of our bylaws says that there was supposed to be a bond put in place for road maintenance. I'm not sure that we have, have any way to collect it, other than to, you know, to lay it in the subdivision, or, you know, you go through channels to try to collect unpaid bills, through the court system.
Well, the order says that you can update the cost of complete at any time, it's a common practice, and at that time, you can add the maintenance. It's not like we're doing anything underhand.
No.
We forgot, we left it out.
Yep.
Honest mistake, there's, it provides for us to protect our investment.
Yeah, and that, that is another method to do it, if you're going to update the cost of complete.
Was I, I recall those emails being passed, didn't they, didn't Town Council suggest we just have to hold a hearing on it? Open it up, discuss it?
Public hearing to hold, to, to update the cost of complete?
No, but to discuss, but to discuss it at, at a board meeting, to discuss it, and...
You said the word hearing, I'm not sure what you mean by that.
I meant at a, I meant at a planning board meeting. You don't recall the Town Council bringing up that procedure?
There's been a lot of correspondence back and forth since then, I don't recall exactly that, but it would make sense that you would update the cost of complete and, and do it at the planning board meeting.
So with, with that movement, where does that leave the existing conditions report and interim as-built, is, I mean, are those two separate issues? Do we have any rights to require that? I mean, obviously, we have the right to get the updated cost of complete and add to it a maintenance bond, and that sounds like a pretty straightforward vote we could take, but it still leaves out this other issue, which is condition of things.
We only have the right to require a final as-built.
Right.
We don't, a lot of people do an interim, because before you do a finished code of payment, you would like to know that the grades and the location is right, rather than digging up two codes, dig up one, but I think in our regulations, it calls for a final as-built, and that's what's bonded, I think if we did a, a review of the current conditions, I think that would be on our dime, Ray, correct? I don't think we can...
Well, Lou has, Lou has agreed, the owner has agreed to do an interim as-built.
Okay.
So, you know, I'm not sure it's such a big issue at this point, I mean, he's, he's already said that he would do it.
The existing conditions report that I'm talking about is no more than a, an inspection that I would normally done. I'm just trying to get away from this, because there's just been no middle ground here at all. It's been, well, we're gonna hear from the developer soon enough, but, but it's nothing but a report, it's like I would do, and that's paid for by the developer, with money that we have in escrow, if we do have that in escrow.
Oh, I see, okay.
So it's another guy doing an inspection, and he'll, he'll pick up, oh, wow, this, this slope's gotta be regraded, or the sidewalk's running through conduit exposed.
I, I look at this as...
Same thing I would've done, but another guy's doing it, and, go ahead.
I, I just look at this as, but Bob would normally do the inspections, you know, I think we've reached a juncture where Bob feels that it would be better to bring somebody else in to do the inspections, rather than him.
Okay, and we still have money in the escrow account?
We still have money in the account.
Okay.
You might wanna check that.
I think we do.
I guess we don't have to.
Okay. So, so, what do you guys wanna do? You wanna take any votes, you wanna hear from Lou, what do you want? Wanna hear from Lou?
Michelle, can I give you this, if you haven't seen it?
Yes.
It just kinda, if you...
I think I've seen the one from the May, I don't think I've seen the one from the June.
Well, we oughta, we oughta hear from the developer before we take any votes.
Yeah. See if we missed anything.
So I formatted it, just like you'd read it aloud, and if you disagree with them, that's fine, do it.
Yep, I think we're definitely on this same page. Okay. Lou, would you like to say anything? Or you don't have to speak if you don't want, but if you, you'd like to, you can take a microphone, and you're welcome to respond to any of that conversation?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if you could address the, the so-called snowplow issue, you know...
Is the mic on?
Is it on? How about now?
Bring it up close, maybe that'll help.
Mr. McGee has misrepresented the fact that we have paid all of our charges for snow plowing. We have objected to paying for the sanding treatments that were excessively applied to the subdivision, and we brought this...
Turn that on, Bob, can you give him your microphone, please? We're gonna give you a switcheroo, Lou.
We brought, we brought this situation up, uh, two or three years ago, we brought it to Mr. McGee's attention, that we thought that the sanding applications were excessive for a private road that was, had limited houses constructed at that time, and, um, the town, under Mr. McGee's direction, continued to do sanding treatments that, in my estimation, are far in excess of what was required for that roadway. And that seems to be, that's the issue, I mean, when you have a plow going down six times in a month, and you have sanding applications that are fourteen times in a month, is, in our experience, that, that's something wrong with that. And, as I've said to Ray and Mr. McGee on several occasions, that we're not objecting to paying the bill, we're just objecting to paying the amount that's been charged. So, however you wanna resolve it, I'm a reasonable guy, but I'm not gonna be bent over the coals with something that I feel is excessive.
Just on that point, let me tell you what I told Lou. In two thousand and thirteen, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, the DPW sands everybody that's contracted with the DPW to sand, you don't sand partial projects or sections of town, correct?
No, we...
Okay, so, when he sands you, he's sanding me, he's sanding everybody. As you know, you have the right to go get your own private company, correct? To me, like I told Lou on the site, you had a complaint in two thousand and thirteen, where you didn't get your own company for two thousand and fourteen, you sort of acquiesced to going by the schedule that the DPW has, if you had a complaint, your job would've been probably to get your own guy and do your own plowing and sanding, but you didn't do that. So why should we give you a break?
I'm not asking for a break, I, I didn't ask for any sanding at all, period, so...
You're required to keep your roads up, and nobody else was sanding it, so the DPW has to, so you're never gonna get it done.
My roads are fine, there's nothing wrong with my roads, we appreciate the fact that they were plowed, but we...
You're required to keep them maintained from pre-snow and ice, and since you had nobody on contract to sand them, then the DPW has a requirement to do it, has a requirement, and they're doing it to you as to me and everybody else, as I said, so I think on that point, Lou, you don't have any standing.
Yeah, I don't even think it's, I don't even think it's worth debating it. It's, it's in the past, the work's been done, you can... You can say you didn't want it to be done, but the work's been done. It should be compensated for. There's no further conversation. It's in the past. It's gotta be resolved. You can't negotiate sanding that was done in the past years later. It can't, it can't be done. So we move forward.
But for next year, you should probably get your own group to do that, and then I guess the question would be, if the roads are ever icy, and you're not maintaining them, and the DPW has a right to go in and ice them for the residents, then you've got at least something there that's more concrete and timely.
You meant sand them, not icing them.
Sand them, sorry, yes.
Go on the record, you don't want the DPW coming and icing the roads.
So you've got that choice for next year, so this doesn't happen again.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, all right, next item.
So, so let me fill you in. I've met with Mr. Weddleton on site, and I've met with Ray Goff on site. We've gone through a number of things that are problematic, in our view, to completing the subdivision. We're on the final stages of completion of the subdivision. We have installed the sidewalks, and we're preparing to install trees and other things that are required of us, but there seems to be a problem with, as I've outlined in my correspondence, that the location called for on, for the tree planting is not available on one of the sides of the streets, because there's underground utilities in the area that's designated for the trees. The second issue was that putting trees on the other side of the street, in the grass strip, in our experience, we don't feel that there's enough area there to avoid long-term uprooting of the sidewalk that will take place over the course of the next five or six years, once the trees grow to a mature height.
What is the grass strip, Lou, in the plans? What's your grass strip?
I think it's five feet. I'm not sure, five.
Just for your own benefit, we had sort of a pointed email from our chairman, who's not here today, 'cause he's not well, but the comment basically was, worrying about the future maintenance of the trees is really the town's problem and not yours. So the plan's called for five feet. You can put them in five feet.
Maybe so. That's your call. I'm paying it to your attention.
I think as long as, as long as the strip was built to the dimension required for the planting.
Of course, we build everything to the required dimensions. But what would happen is, on the opposite side of the street, you'd have one tree, one set of trees that were in the grass strip in another area across the street that would not be balanced, let's say, with the opposite side of the street. So listen, we, we have a plan. We have, we know what we're supposed to do. I'm only suggesting that there's could be some other alternatives. Yeah, you can stick your head in the sand and say, well, that's our future. That's not your, you know, we'll take care of it when the time comes. Well, I can tell you, I can show you pictures of sidewalks that are uprooted in other towns where a similar situation has occurred, so...
Are the utilities supposed to be put on that side of the street?
Yeah, that's, that's the question I have. If you knew you had to plant trees in the, in the grass strip, how did you run utilities out of it?
We don't, we don't design the utilities. The utility companies design it, and the plan was submitted to the planning board prior to the installation, and we just follow the rules. We don't make the rules.
Well, question fire. Is there, Lou, while we're on this subject, going down Warren Drive, are the utilities on the right in the wrong spot?
Excuse me, Winston Road, you mean?
Winston Road.
They're on, they're in the right spot, and they're on the right area. On the right...
Who told me differently?
When you, I don't know, but I'm not sure what we're talking about. First of all, it's an eight-foot grass strip. That's our specifications. And I think it's close enough to call it eight feet. Trees are planned to go in the grass strip. That's plenty of room for a tree, given the right root ball and materials to support that root system. The question is, if the utilities ran up the grass strip, how and why, and how are we gonna put trees in there now?
And that's a legitimate question, because I have it in a small section where fires just come up and put a line in the grass strip. My, my question was pertaining to, aside from the grass strip, we have a right-of-way section that's approximately, is that a sixty-foot right-of-way?
Fifty.
Fifty. So we have approximately twelve feet off of the curbing where the utility should go, on that, on that side of Winston.
On the sidewalk side, John?
On the other side from the sidewalk.
Yeah, opposite sidewalk.
So on that other side, normally, the utilities will be put towards the curb, and the trees behind it. Is that the case?
Say that again.
On the other side of the sidewalk, the utilities, how far from the curbing are the utilities in that? Where there's no sidewalk?
There's no sidewalk. Well, we would typically plant them proportionate distance from, as was in the grass strip.
But are the utilities behind the curb eight or nine feet, or are they close to the curb?
I don't know.
So here's the problem I'm having with this conversation.
We've had, just dig safe.
Here's the problem I'm having. Without an interim as-built plan, as we've been talking about, this is way too complicated to follow. The utilities are supposed to be here, but now they're there. I have trees over here, but it's not gonna match over there. Exactly, are they eight inches? Are they nine feet? I think the only way, if we're looking for relief of some of the conditions of the site plan approval, we're gonna need a current site plan in front of us, that we can talk to each of these issues, if you're looking for any relief. If you're not looking for relief, then just go build what you're supposed to build.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Well, that's the plan right there. An as-built plan is not going to deviate from that plan.
Well, you're telling me the utilities deviate from where the trees are supposed to go, so it is deviating.
It's not shown on that plan.
No, but an interim as-built plan would show them.
No, they wouldn't.
Why not? They're in the ground.
It'll show them. It'll show the utilities.
We would, we would go and notify DigSafe to mark out the utilities, and that's how the utilities will get marked.
Yeah, but the question was, an interim as-built shows the utilities. It shows exactly where they are.
Yeah, so if we're gonna have conversations about relief of...
Of course it does.
We, you and I talked on site, and one of the things we, you said you would do was the interim as-built.
Oh, yeah. No, that's in the process, but it's...
And the other thing you said you were going to do is call DigSafe and have them mark out the site.
Correct. That's correct.
Did you do that?
And I don't know if they've been out there yet, but it's been marked for DigSafe.
But you've done that.
My only point is, any conversation about trees, utilities, you know, differences from what we may have approved as a board years ago versus what we're trying to talk about today, is a conversation that I'm not willing to have without a graphic in front of me, because I wasn't on the board when these plans were approved, so I got nothing to go by but these anecdotal stories of eight inches here, five feet there, and I'm not doing it, 'cause it's not a grounded conversation. So I think if the conversation is you're looking for some input, we gotta get that plan in front of us. So let's move on to the next issue.
That's a great first step. And Lou's defense, it has happened recently at Fox Run. It's happened with my site. Years ago, when the planning board decided where the trees were going, many times, it was back and forth, and there was no consistent layout, not only to the trees, to where the utilities are going.
Yeah.
So there are gonna be coming spots and subdivisions where the trees don't work according to plan. So I will give you that much, but as Michelle said, until we know where everything is and where the trees can physically go, we're sort of just wasting our time.
Well, I don't know then why I was invited here to, you know, I came as a courtesy. I played golf all day. I'm very tired.
So sorry, Lou. Well, you may be interested in hearing some of the votes we're gonna take, and maybe we're ready to take our votes then.
Well...
I think there are...
I take deference to that statement, if you don't mind. I mean, you and I had talked about this, this project. We talked about trying to move forward with some of the issues that you have.
We are.
And, and you were invited here because you had some issues that you wanted cleared up. I didn't have the authority nor the power to make these changes, and so my suggestion was, why don't we go to the planning board with your requests and see what we can do, and that's what we're doing here tonight. So, so tell me what, what's wrong with that?
Well, we're, we're, we don't have the information in front of us in order to get input from the board that...
Okay.
On that issue, but there's other issues that we might.
Like what ish?
Well, you're talking about the first one, your Cape Cod berm versus monolithic berm.
Well, again, again... Again, we have a plan, and the, and the plan says Cape Cod berm, so if, unless the planning board decides that they wanna change the requirement, then we construct the subdivision per the plan, so...
Was the berm accepted when you were putting it? Was it inspected?
I, I have no...
If it wasn't, then it becomes no good, as you know.
Well, no, that's not true.
It is true. If it's not inspected, they have the right to question and change it.
Mr. McGee was there, and he...
He said he wasn't. That's why I asked him.
But why would we wanna change what's on the plan?
No, I didn't expect it. I was not informed of it, so that's a fact.
Well, listen.
Well, the Cape Cod berm is sort of a subjective thing. A Cape Cod berm can be a bunch of, it's, it's used as a catch-all phrase for non-granite slope curving. It can have a hump of six inches. It can have a monolithic spread out over one foot, which most people go for, 'cause the plows don't just drop 'em up.
Yeah.
So Lou's berm down there would probably take, what, five minutes with a backhoe just to take it up? It's nothing. Which is what the plow would do if you lever it like that.
So, so my money is nothing, when, when we go to the expense of putting down something, my money is like, isn't of the same value of the town's money.
Nobody said that at all.
Well, that's what I'm hearing.
You're making up, you're making up your own story. You're not paying the sanding bill for two years, and you're talking about your money. But basically, convention, you've done enough subdivisions to know, convention is that you do something, road construction, that the town is gonna own, it has to be inspected as it's going in, whether it be paving, sidewalks, utility, everything.
We call for inspections prior to the work.
Well, that's, that's my intention.
Okay, well then, let's go through the reports then. My, I have a project manager who I know is experienced and knows what is required when these things go, go, work is done, and I'm assured that he called Mr. McGee for an inspection. Now, whether or not Mr. McGee visited the site in a timely manner to observe the inspection of the curbing being installed, that's not our problem.
Could somebody inspect the sidewalk that was in recently that has utility boxes in it?
Yes.
And that's okay?
Is that a violation of any rule or regulation?
Yeah, I guess it is.
Where?
The sidewalk has to be five-foot paved without obstructions. You've got, you've got utility boxes in the sidewalk.
Again?
That's a, yeah, that's a, that's a violation.
That's not a violation.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Well, we disagree.
No, we don't put the utility boxes in the sidewalks.
We disagree. They're utility boxes in sidewalks throughout the entire community.
I guess we will disagree.
Okay.
We will disagree.
Right. Just for the record, in case we get past, I'm sorry, but I was informed that they were putting sidewalks in when I come and inspect them, and I said, no.
Right.
I did not inspect the sidewalks that just went in, the gravel underneath it, or the water service that went, that you tapped our main to bring to our house.
We've had them inspected by professionals.
Thank you for that, but, and the other thing, if you were to go with a monolithic berm, you would save money at the end of this project, so your money...
I'm not disagree, I'm not disagreeing with you, Bob. All I'm saying is that you're, you're trying to make these things into like some level of items that you can sort of leverage against us in some fashion, that to cause us financial harm, and I'm not buying into it.
Ray, Lou said a moment ago that the plans call for Cape Cod berm, not monolithic berm. Is that true? Can you...
Yeah, in one of the notes in the plan, it calls for a Cape Cod berm. That was one of the authorizations that the planning board gave the, gave the subdivision.
So since that time, our preference has changed to monolithic berm.
It has, and with the site developer, not this developer, the construction contractor that was on it, was fully aware of it and laid out the binder cost to accept a monolithic-style berm. And it was nothing but a mistake, and it's not a big deal. In the end, you're gonna save money. You will save money.
I understand.
I'll do the calculations. I'll show you.
Listen, I'm not objecting to that, Bob. What I'm saying is that we stopped work on that section of the road. We did not install another berm on the opposite side of the street because of your preference. We're simply saying that we have a plan that gives us direction on what to construct and what to install. We then have somebody else coming to the site telling us that they don't want what the planning board approved, leaving us sort of like, okay, what do we do? Well, we do nothing. That's what we do. That's, so we're here tonight to try and resolve. If the planning board wants a monolithic berm, then vote it. Then we'll decide what to do with the berm that's there and how to even out the numbers here. That's all. Just vote the monolithic berm.
So we're gonna be getting an interim as-built and a, a status of...
We wanna talk about having a outside consultant firm do the inspections, and that way, all this stuff can be resolved in the field. That's the process. There's a lot of years that go by between the approval of these plans and the actual inspection on the site. So if this is the process to get those things resolved, we'll get that resolved.
And adjust the bond accordingly.
We're going to look at a new cost-to-complete bond, along with adding a maintenance bond to it. And if, if you're willing, I mean, we can't demand you to do the interim as-built, but if you're willing to do that, that's something that we would...
Well, I don't see the need for both. If you, if you, if we're going to the expense of having an interim as-built completed, then I don't understand what the inspection report does, because the as-built is the, is...
I can tell you. It's, it's, you know, the interim as-built is gonna show you where the road is. It's gonna show you where your, your sidewalks are, your, your curbing, if there was curbing, but it's not gonna show, it's not gonna show you where the trees are. It's not gonna show you location, what's going on for maintenance in this...
It won't show defects in construction.
Thank you.
It'll show where the trees are, but it won't show defects in construction.
And that's where the inspection comes in. And, you know, we're supplementing what Bob would normally do for this inspection, and that's really what we need to be doing in order to move forward. We really shouldn't allow this to move forward at all until we, we get this inspection done.
I think it would be helpful, too, to have a consultant be, get familiar with the development, 'cause I think going forward, as inspections are requested, perhaps, this is a firm that can continue those inspections moving forward.
Yeah, there's not a lot of inspections left. I mean, there's the final pavement. There's this, this Cape Cod berm that has to go in. This, I think there's some paving on Turner that has to happen. It's part of this project, and...
It would hurt to have an objective third party.
And that's exactly why we're doing that at this point, is because I think we've reached a point where we're making no movement in any direction, and I think we need someone else to step in and give us their two cents.
Yeah, and, and I think we worked tonight on the things that were within our control. So if you choose to do an as-built, great. If you don't, there's nothing we can do about it, but we do have the power to vote the existing conditions report. And I'm a little bit leery about, you know, going on commitments that may not come to fruition. So I think, again, we vote and take action on things that are within our control.
So we can do.
Yeah. So with that, let's, again, there's, looks like there are two that we have, say, in having a vote over, and that would be the consulting firm inspections and the update to the cost-to-complete with the maintenance bond.
How can you do a cost-to-complete without an interim as-built?
Well, we're gonna do, so the first one is to get the consulting firm to do an existing conditions report, so we'll at least can get a lot of information on that.
The, the interim as-built really tells you where everything is and if it's in the right location on the ground. Bob seems to think that it's, it's, it is in the right location. Hopefully, it is. The, the inspection that our engineer would do won't be able to tell that, so we will be missing that bit of information.
The person going out doing the, doing the existing condition can look at a plan and see a six-foot strip and measure out areas where the grass strip is eight feet or three feet, and...
Yeah, there are certain things that they could confirm.
So without doing an as-built, you can tell very simply what some of the things that they're not like.
And then that firm could also confirm the cost-to-complete value.
Correct. Yes.
Update it.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody wanna take a stab at this?
I'll take a stab at it. I move to authorize an engineering consultant to provide an inspection of the subdivision and provide the board with an existing conditions report and to update the cost-to-complete bond, along with adding a cost for maintenance for the Fernridge subdivision.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Question?
Yes.
Now, who's, who is the board think, I mean, they're gonna bid this out to a professional firm?
Do you have a couple of engineering firms that we've been working with, so we will probably ask them for some costs?
We will ask them for a cost estimate, a cost estimate, and we typically choose the lower two cost estimates.
So, and you're expecting Wall Street to be the payee?
Yes.
Yeah, it would come out of the escrow fund that we have on hand. So rather than paying Bob, it'll just pay this third party instead.
Yeah.
You deserve the right to review the report from the consultant.
Sure, the, the report and the bids, absolutely. It's all public information.
You can see those.
And we use, we're using...
That's just customary procedure anyway.
Beta and...
Weston and Sampson.
Weston and Sampson are the two that we'll be getting bids from.
Did you pick any more expensive ones, or how about a local firm?
We went through an RFP process back in January. We, we bid it out to, I think we...
I can tell you right now that I'm not, I'm not gonna accept any kind of, any of those two firms as an inspector.
We followed the state procurement process, and we, it's a fair process.
What you want.
But this is, this is what we do. This is how we do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
All right. So we are gonna move on. Do we wanna do twos and, or do we wanna get through the other ANRs first? No preference? Hmm? No preference? All right, let's go in order then.
You guys just have decisions. I'm gonna head out.
I'm gonna head out.
I think. Anything on Alexander Fredrickson that you need to be, no? Nothing?
Victor.
Thanks, Andrea.
Andrea.
All right, Toils End Farm, Fox Run subdivision. We should have a something or other in our packets.
I'm happy. Just keep moving.
Oh, Fredrickson. Turner.
What are we doing this time?
Um, we are on Toils End, Fox Run.
Um, actually, I don't think we have, no. I think every decision was exactly what the board had approved.
So, there's no, nobody reviewed it with any comments or anything?
Um, I don't think so. I think everybody was, it was the same plan, they just screwed our, um, decision.
Can we, where is it?
No problem.
Sure. Yeah. So, we need to sign the Mylar, right?
Sign everything.
Yeah.
Make sure that they take care of every little, little cranny on the site, so that we're then, I mean, if this town needs protected, is protected, and make sure each one of them know that, so it might come out. That's fine. That's necessary. That's good. Oh, I found legs. They're very sexy. Let me just...
Here's the decision. I just make sure.
Make sure some of these things around here are placed in the conservation restrictions.
Well, that's, yeah, yeah. Um, the question is, is the language on this...
Has anybody reviewed?
Have you reviewed the language and make sure they got the language right on the Mylar?
Yeah, everything that we talked about.
It was taken right from our decision.
Yeah, it was right from the decision. I did read that.
And had we reviewed that decision, though? 'Cause I, I just remember last time we talked about it, there was things like...
Yeah, the decision was actually filed with the town about twenty days ago.
Okay. All right, that was something. 'Cause I knew that there was some discussion about maybe making sure language was in there about the conservation restriction and the changes to a lot for...
We just got that out, and we sent it off to town council.
Okay, so that's...
All right.
All right, so we should be, do we have to vote to sign this or just, just sign it?
No, I think so.
Sign it.
Okay.
You guys have already voted on this, right?
Yeah, we voted on it, well, yeah.
Okay. All right. Gold, Myrtle Street A and R.
Gina, you had a few comments on that. Have you seen the Gold Street, Myrtle Street A and R to see if they made these changes?
Uh, no, I haven't seen if they made, made any changes.
I didn't see the revised.
So, we're just trying to look at Gold Street, um, Gina was taking a minute to look at Gold Street, Myrtle Street to see if the few comments he had were picked up on the ground.
Yeah, on this thing, yeah, okay.
You got it.
Well, there was really only one change. The other was, the others were comments, but they didn't require a change. But the one, the one change is not, was not made.
And which one, is that the...
It's not, it's not a big deal, but...
The floodplain?
The floodplain. They still refer to the nineteen eighty-five, um, panels, flood, flood hazard maps.
And what should it be? The two thousand...
Two thousand ten, twenty ten.
Can we hand strike that and initial it?
Well, it's...
The floodplain map would change.
Hmm?
The floodplain line would change.
Two thousand and ten, there was a major overhaul on the floodplain.
Yeah.
It's not relevant to this plan because if they have filed, the conservation would request all of the data and make them update the floodplain line anyway if they had to work in that area, so I don't think it matters.
Do you think it's okay that they referenced the wrong floodplain map?
Well, it's, um...
I mean, it's one thing to change the lines.
It doesn't really affect anything. It's not in, it's not like it's in the floodplain. It's not in the floodplain, unless by some, you know, long shot, it's in the new floodplain.
That's what I'm wondering, because it's awfully, it's awfully close to Charles River over there, isn't it?
No, it's not that close.
North Street, Myrtle Street?
No.
Sure, it is right back there by the, um, arena. By the North Park Arena.
The arena, it's up there by Holbrook Street. It's...
I thought it was right across the street on Myrtle. I thought it came.
But, but the, the bottom line is...
No, you see right there?
As John says, that, that's really not a factor for an A and R plan anyway. Um, the, the major comment I have, which is not something you can require, but with the reflagging of the wetlands, it, the last, the last time we talked about, wouldn't it be nice if you could have access to this lot off Gold Street?
Right.
And with the reflagging of the wetlands, it looks like there, there might have been room to do that, to give, um...
Rather than come out onto Myrtle.
Rather, but that's...
I don't think that flagging was what just...
Oh, no, okay. Okay. And, and like I say, you, you can't make, it's, it's approval not required, so...
Right.
Just a thought.
So, do we have a comfort level then signing this?
Should we, should we note the, the change in, in date of the, of the floodplain drawing? Just, just...
I don't think it's relative to what we're approving. We're approving that this means zoning for that lot. If there's other information, I mean, these wetland flags could be wrong, too. They were never witnessed or approved, so there, there could be other things that, we're just approving that this lot here means zoning requirements, not buildable or anything else, just being zoning requirements, that's all.
All right. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, this one we do need to vote on to sign?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody up for it?
John's turn.
Judge turn.
Motion to approve A and R lot, lot number five dash two, from Erie and Headland, Inc., dated June ninth, two thousand fifteen, presented by...
Stivella.
Stivella, correct.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we can sign that one.
So, where's, what do we sign? The paper or the Mylar or...
Everything.
Both.
Let's see, how many of these, all over there? You want them all signed? Okay, we can get to that.
Yeah, we should move on. We'll sign it later.
Alexander Estates, Fredrickson Road. Also have something in our packet for that.
Yep. This one here?
Yeah, there's a second one, too. There's actually two different issues.
Yeah, yeah.
There was a review and the sign the Mylar plan, and then later on is our...
Yep.
Review and approve the preliminary subdivision. So, let's just lump them together and take them on at the same time. But in terms, let's get the A and R out of the way first, since that's the more straightforward one.
There were two very, very minor, uh, technical things there. We asked for the distance at the front setback line, and this front setback line is shown, there's not a dimension on it, and it's, it's kind of awkward, 'cause it goes, runs around the end of the road, uh, so that's probably why, there was no dimension on it, uh, maybe, um, it's clearly, it's, it's clearly way more than, than required, so it's not, not an issue. And then it's similarly, the, uh, the circle, uh, it is the right dimension, but the, the right dimension, the dimension's not shown, but it meets it, so again, the circle easily fits in there.
Again, can we just kinda hand note that? It's two hundred and sixty foot and it's...
Is this being recorded the registry?
Yes.
They don't accept handwriting?
No.
Gee, it's gone, long gone the days, huh?
Yeah.
And especially not by somebody who wasn't the professional land surveyor who stamped the plan.
Were you the one who stamped the plan?
But it wasn't him either.
So, it should, it has to be on there to be recorded, I would imagine, right?
No, no, it, it's no problem.
No, we can sign it.
Yeah, yeah.
No, 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 but does he need that on there? Does he need to redo the plans?
No, as long as we know that it meets the, uh...
Okay.
I'm comfortable with it.
All right.
Were you?
Yeah, as long as, as I get the word from our consultant that we're above board, I'm okay with it.
Meets all the minimums.
Yeah.
So, do we need to vote on this one?
We do.
Yes.
Want to do a vote?
Okay. I move to approve the Alexander State Fredrickson Road A and R plan as prepared by Paul Decimo, professional land surveyor, dated June eleventh, two thousand fifty. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we will get that signed, and then we will talk about the preliminary subdivision decision, which is also in our packets.
Does this really even have any legal bearing?
The preliminary, no.
Okay.
No, not, not approving it doesn't prevent them from submitting the definitive, and approving it doesn't give, give them anything, so...
It's a good summary.
Yes.
Of...
Yeah, provides guidance.
What the planning board has, has agreed or not agreed to.
Yeah.
And it's good as you go forward with the preliminary.
Absolutely.
What are you folks here for tonight?
The Gold Street, Gold Street.
I just did that one, and I didn't ask for any comments. I'm sorry. And what about you guys?
Alexander State.
And sir, are you here for something?
It's Stivella.
Yeah.
And I had a question for Turner Street, just trying to understand that. I know I've got questions, but just curious about the scope of the topic.
I didn't realize, I didn't call anyone in the audience, I didn't realize there were any issues about Gold Myrtle. We just, we just, um, signed on that.
I'm with Stivella, I'm just kinda waiting to, I'm waiting to wrap up.
Okay. All right. So, since we are talking about Alexander Estates, we're just gonna take a look at this preliminary decision, but if you had, if you wanna take a microphone, if you had any questions or comments, or you're just here to observe?
I have no questions or comments.
Okay, great. We'll take a look at it then.
Do you wanna just explain what they're doing, or you want me to explain what that plan is all about?
The A and R?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. On the original plan that I think you folks have seen already, there was a couple of lots that were designated as open space lots, and so those were lettered lots. What they're doing now is they're, they're separating those lots off of the, of the plan itself, so that they'll be left with what they're going to develop, so...
So, first step before then the subdivision of the rest of the land.
Does that leave you with any questions, or are you okay with that?
Right. So, even though this...
About Turner Street, which was...
Okay.
Yeah. Did you, I don't know if you were here earlier when we had to postpone Turner Street because we didn't have...
I was trying to understand, is it just a plan to develop on the land out there open, or does the plan include connecting to Mass Ave?
So, you, so you wanna know if the plan was to, to connect...
To Mass Ave.
To Mass Ave? Well, the property connects from Turner Street to Mass Avenue. Um, the plan was to do three lots, three A and R lots, um, meaning that they, they're larger than the required zoning in that area. Um, and one of those lots would front on Massachusetts Avenue. Two of the lots will front on Turner Street.
But the road doesn't make the connection, does it?
There is no road connection. There's no extension of any roads, there's no, nothing more than what you see today in terms of the roads that are there. No one's going to be improving any of the roads. Turner's not being improved, uh, Mass Ave's not being improved or extended.
What we were happy to do at the end of the meeting is put the plan out and you could take a peek at it.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what I was looking for.
Okay.
Thanks.
So, even though this preliminary decision has no legal bearing or consequences, I think the work's been done, so we should at least...
Acknowledge it.
Take a peek through it and see if anyone has any questions or comments. Oh, and actually, I can't, um, I can't sign on any of this. We don't have quorum again. Sorry. We have to, I have to retract all that.
You can still read it.
I can't, I can't even be at the table.
Okay.
This will hold.
Okay, sorry.
Next meeting.
I'm a butter, so, um, I have to recuse myself, so since that leaves us with less than a quorum, everything we just did is struck from the record, and we'll have to take it up next meeting. Sorry.
The A and R cannot be signed, yep.
Or Alexander State.
And, yeah, anything Alexander State on this preliminary subdivision can't be voted on either. So, we have to retract that previous vote. Sorry.
She's a butter.
Yeah, so the law is that I have to recuse myself. Sorry.
Yeah, as ridiculous as it may seem, it's, it's the law, and that's what we have to do.
I apologize. So...
Yeah, we forgot that, didn't we?
I forgot that, yeah.
Me, too.
So, that brings us to Twenty Valley Street.
Yep.
Yep.
Can't do that one either.
Because...
It's a special permit, requires four volts.
Okay.
Move right along.
We'll get out early.
Well, you see that you at least put a couple of dates. I know we don't have everybody here, but let's look, look at the couple of dates you put out for, um, the special workshop and see if any of us have...
Fair enough, but this does argue for meetings more frequent than every four weeks. I mean, you get into one of these things like this, it's just a technicality, other than that, we could move forward on it, and the applicant now has to wait another month before something happens, you know?
I know.[1609.16]
You can still read it.
I can't, I can't even be at the table.
Okay.
Just a hold.
Okay, sorry.
Next meeting.
I'm a, a butter, so I have to recuse myself. So since that leaves us with less than a quorum, everything we just did is struck from the record and we'll have to take it up next meeting. Sorry. The A and R cannot be signed, yep.
Or Alexander Estates.
Yeah, anything Alexander Estates on this preliminary subdivision can't be voted on either. So we have to retract that previous vote.
Yeah, she's a butter.
Yeah, so the law is that I have to recuse myself. Sorry.
As ridiculous as it may seem, it's, it's the law, and that's what we have to do.
Apologize. So.
Yeah, we forgot that, didn't we?
I forgot that, yeah.
Me too.
So that brings us to Twenty Valley Street.
Yep.
Yep.
Can't do that one either.
Because.
It's a special permit. Requires four volts.
Okay.
Moving right along.
We'll get out early.
Well, you see that you at least put a couple of dates. I know we don't have everybody here, but let's look, look at the couple of dates you put out for, um, the special workshop and see if any of us have comments.
Fair enough, but this does argue for meetings more frequent than every four weeks. I mean, you get into one of these things like this, it's just a technicality. Other than that, we could move forward on it. And the applicant now has to wait another month before something happens, you know?
Well, if we meet on June thirtieth, that's only two weeks, and we can take care of these issues and also meet on some other issues.
Okay, fair enough. Fair enough, yeah.
We're scheduling a possible planning board workshop?
Yeah, on the thirtieth.
On the thirtieth.
Yeah, so we could have a.
We can do a few.
Formal meeting, and then we could adjourn that and go into the workshop. Yeah, sure, okay. Well, okay, yep.
Yeah, I think the only problem to committing to that is obviously we don't have Steve or Jeff here, but the thirtieth would be fine for me.
Did you hear from either one of them? And you sent an email about, about the thirtieth. Did you hear from either, yeah?
I sent an email regarding, regarding the board of selectmen meetings.
Yeah.
But that wasn't for this.
What was the date of that meeting?
The board of selectmen meeting was, was the thirtieth?
Thirtieth, yeah. It was the thirtieth.
No, we can't, thank you. They're meeting at seven.
And we were meeting at seven thirty, right? With them?
Yeah.
But it was not gonna take, it's not, yeah, it's not going to take all evening, is it?
Seven, six thirty?
Yeah, I know, but.
For the thirtieth?
We can get in and out. We could have, our meeting at eight o'clock.
For an hour and then just do your.
That's true.
Selectment thing was, is on the agenda. This is a different committee. This is the zoning working committee dealing with the Southwood development, and that is scheduled for seven o'clock with the board of selectmen, so.
Seven? Like you said, seven thirty in the last email that you sent.
Seven, I thought I sent out.
At any rate, that, that obviates the opportunity to have a, a planning board meeting that evening.
Yeah.
Yeah. So. And even if we did, Jeff would have to remain with the board of selectmen.
Correct.
Yes, right. So I think the thirtieth is out.
We have to find a, a date which is not a board of selectmen meeting.
Why don't you work on that and let us know and let everybody know.
Yeah, you're gonna have to. Do I have to wait twenty one days to have this signed because you're missing board number something or?
Gold Street?
No, not yours.
Gold Street, we're good.
We'll have, I'll have that ready for tomorrow, pick up.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I didn't, I, at the first I am, I was like, oh, I don't know, what rather you can't sign it? Okay, well, that's great. That's one thing I wanted to know.
Unless somebody moved recently.
Okay, thanks.
Smartphone, not a quick phone.
I don't know if anybody's getting suggestions, but this is all.
You can figure it out tomorrow when, call everybody, yeah.
Yeah, Fourth of July is tough.
No one wants to have meetings on the Fourth of July week.
Unless we wanted to do something as soon as, you know. Next week or a Thursday, you know, give us a little, maybe next week from this Thursday or. Or Thursday, July ninth. Puts it out a little bit away from the Fourth of July, if we can move to a Thursday.
I can't do the Thursday, the twenty fifth. I've got another commitment that night.
And I can't do Tuesday, the twenty third. I have a commitment that night. But I could do July ninth, which is a Thursday.
I could as well.
And that would make us the ninth and the fourteenth.
Yeah.
So, or, or you would also suggest a July twenty first.
What about the seventh?
That's.
No? Tuesday, the seventh? No?
There's no sense in meeting July ninth on all occasions, like a couple days before our regular meeting.
Yeah, I mean, unless we, I'm kind of talking about the special.
Oh, the, oh, that's right.
The special meeting.
Why don't you throw some dates out tomorrow to everybody?
Yeah.
See if everybody can make it.
Yep.
It's not pressing that we get it done tonight.
Those two people missing, so.
Okay, thanks, Betsy. So do we have any meeting minutes or vouchers we have to sign or?
No.
Nothing, nothing. So we are truly done.
We're gonna sign one of these guys.
Yeah, I have a bunch of signings to do. And then we'll roll out the plan, and if you had any questions, you can let us know, but.
One thing on the other business, at the last meeting, we talked about two forty-two Dedham Street.
Yes.
And the sidewalk that was supposed to run from Dedham Street up to about halfway through the site and then curve in. With the grade that there's, that was there and just trying to avoid building another wall along that property line, it just didn't, the sidewalk doesn't work. It doesn't make sense because you're gonna have a sidewalk on a slope that just, you'll never get to work properly. I took it upon myself to suggest to them, just let's not do the sidewalk at all in that location. There, there are sidewalks that could possibly go along Dedham Street, and, you know, if there's a need to do a sidewalk somewhere else to get up onto the property, maybe at that time we could do something like that.
Wasn't that the one that was going to be just gravel and then they were gonna put the dirt over it?
Along Dedham Street, yes.
Yeah.
But this other sidewalk was gonna be a, a concrete sidewalk.
And that was to bring pedestrians in as a way to get them safely in across the parking lot without crossing through traffic.
The bridge just didn't work over there. It's just, it was too sweet, too steep. In fact, I found out that an earlier surveyor had, had Dedham Street six inches higher than it currently, that it actually is. So in looking at that sidewalk.
We were always looking at a slope. We were never looking at a retaining wall on the side of that sidewalk?
There was a talk about a retaining wall. We talked about removing that retaining wall, and that's the direction we ended up ultimately going.
I think the reason we talked about removing the retaining wall though is because we felt that we could get the slope and have, and then therefore reduce the cost of having to put in a retaining wall. But I think to just do away completely with the sidewalk, I'd rather go back to the retaining wall.
So what?
Than completely do away with the sidewalk.
I understand. So with your.
The building was built flatly. We were, the building was built at least three feet too high for no reason. And they had to reconstruct the entranceway because cars couldn't go in because of you going up like this and all the.
Yeah, sure, especially.
So that was redone, and why the building sits up as it does, I have no idea. That was the old plan done with Evan Wilmott and Gary, and that threw off everything. So if you went and saw what the slope was and even putting a wall in it, it wouldn't make it.
So what, what is the plan then for getting pedestrians from that next to a lot into this lot?
Or just anywhere along that sidewalk into it?
It would have to be just a street front sidewalk, yeah. Right now, there's nothing near street front or otherwise, but.
But is there an opportunity somewhere along that street front that would make more sense to channel them in in a safe way? I know at one point we had that little landscape that we also took away at the last meeting. But i- is there a spot somewhere along that road traffic that makes it a safer entry point, whether it be at, you know, the, the edge of where the parking stops or somewhere that can be striped or landscaped or something to sort of make it a safer pedestrian access than cutting across a parking lot?
Well, they could go anywhere between the two egresses, but I think right now isn't everything constructed?
Everything's constructed. I mean, you know, they could easily walk, walk in through the side street there, Sharon Ave, and walk in through there. You know, we're not talking about a, a heavily populated city street. We're talking about.
Right. Yeah, handful of.
A side street, and there's gonna be a handful of cars. It's, it's.
Well, the issue also was coming from the other direction, from the lot next door, wasn't it? There was a desire to get pedestrian access from the lot next door.
Yes, in lieu of, at the time, connecting the two parking lots.
Yes.
Through that driveway requirement that we used to have, that we don't even have anymore on the, on the bylaws.
Yeah, so how did that end up?
Connecting to the lot next door. I, I wasn't even aware that that was the point of this sidewalk, was to connect to the lot next door. I thought it was to get people from Dedham Street.
Eventually it was connected.
Back up to the site.
Yeah.
It was to get, it was to. Yeah.
I think the idea was you could park at that site next door, have done your business, go on the sidewalk, and then easily get to the business next door. So it was in the spirit of trying to connect these, you know, these businesses, these parking lots.
I get that, but there was this mysterious sidewalk that doesn't exist right now on, along Dedham Street.
Right, right.
Didn't make too much sense to me that you would have a sidewalk to, an existing sidewalk, a sidewalk that didn't exist.
Well, I mean, there's the base for it and the intention for it, and everyone knows that that's the point, so, yeah.
So now you gotta walk out into the street. If you want to come from next door on foot, you gotta walk out into the street, up the street, and in the entrance of the, of the.
Or along the grass street.
You walk, walk along the grass.
When it's, when it's grassy.
When it's grassy and there's no snow.
Right.
Right. And when there's snow, you just take your snowshoes and go.
Or you go on the.
Like everyone else does everywhere else. Nobody, nobody shovel sidewalks.
Yeah. Okay. Done, it's done. I hear a motion to, so moved.
Okay, we are going to adjourn. Thank you, everybody. All right, I got some signatures.